So welcome, everybody, to the Committee of the Whole Room for February 27th, 2024. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the first people's traditional land. We recognize the traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who have walked this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the trees with all the first people and nations I call the Daisies. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I would like to call this meeting to an end. Council, are there any additions, additions, key additions? And seeing hearing now, administration?
Through the chair, no, we don't have any additions and deletions, but as I mentioned before, if we could be flexible on item 5.4 and let me do it just to accommodate for our consultants' time, that will be perfect.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Tom, what could we add or change about the agenda? And Mr. Mayor?
I move that we adopt the agenda for the Committee of the Whole February 27th.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the motion is to adopt the agenda as presented. Counsel, please move now.
Sure.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm not signing yet.
Okay, and Kristen and Ryan?
Yes.
And that is very. Okay, Jen, do we have anybody for the council?
No.
Nobody? And you have no one for the council, and is there anyone for delegations and presentations?
No, I don't have two.
Okay, so we're going to start with your formant administration. And we'll start with 5.1, which is from page, sorry.
Mr. Chair, leave our consultant as you're doing this.
Oh, yes. So we will start with 5.4, and that's page 34 of your.
And Chair, I will turn this over to Ms. Juke.
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of committee. So the matter for you is regarding the signage standards manual, which committee has been reviewing and considering over several meetings in the past two years. In 2023, council added Hinton's metal silhouette banners and standard as well as timber frame standard for interpretive signage and several other changes, which are all have been effective with the exception of one. The one remaining item that the committee needed to bring in on was whether or not the town could use alternative materials for the posts in wayfinding and park signage standard. So thanks to the Development Services Branch, we were able to reengage urban systems, the original creators of the manual, to investigate options that would still work with the overall aesthetic of our sign designs. So Lee Gitten is here tonight, thank you, Lee, to present the report that was produced, which is also attached to your agenda. Lee is a landscape designer and community consultant with Urban Goodlands, and she also just finished reviewing the BDCOC's Wayfinding Signage Plan from Maxwell Lake area to be implemented in 2425. So without, turn it over to Lee to present the report that they've produced for us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me join today, and thanks for the invitation, Deb. I'll just share my screen here. I just have the the meeting agenda up on my other screen. Please let me know if you can't see it. But yeah, as Deb mentioned, we are looking for the poll alternative options and just wanted to give you a run through of exactly what our process looked like and then where we're sitting today. So without hesitation, let's get into it. So we started this process, we were engaged in mid-fall of 2023, and with direction from Deb and others, we are looking at just a wholesale overview of what else is on the market and what makes sense from a number of perspectives. And thinking about all of the the work that had been produced and the good work that had been done in order to implement the signage and roll out the the entire signage strategy in the ground and in the field. And, you know, thinking about how it fits into the the design context of the town and other elements that are combined within within that from an aesthetic perspective. So what we learned, the current specification is the wood, peeled wood log, as you see in a number of different elements throughout the town. There is the need for annual or biennial maintenance for refinishing, which has not been kept up to the level that was expected from day one. And so there are, we are starting to see some weathering take place, and hence why we're kind of having this conversation to see if there's other options. What the group was looking for was a higher level of durability in these other options, and then also tying back into that recognizability and seamlessness with the aesthetic that we are still trying to be cohesive with. In terms of maintenance, and what we were really looking for in the product was maintenance needs to be practical. The lifespan would be increased, not decreased. Product needs to possess high level of durability, so back to that maintenance piece as well. And then the ability to be supplied and or fabricated in a local way, so as close to Hinton as possible. So this is the process that we undertook. We gathered the information, we did a desktop review of a number of different options, and then we analyzed all of those options based on the initial parameters that were set out. We filtered the products based on alignment after a meeting with town staff, and then we completed a high-level cost analysis, so dug deeper into that that second tier and that second filter of options. And now we're at the point where we're gaining consensus in order to propose a resolution or recommendation and further filter the options down to do a more holistic review. So these are the initial options. There were six options that were presented in the desktop scan. So the peeled log as it exists today, a plastic product that could resemble and be molded to to look like wood grain and have that that kind of aesthetic to it. Fiber cement, which is like a cast-in-form product as well. Aluminum with a printed wood finish, so a smooth finish, but the look of wood. Processed natural wood, so this is a specialty product that comes from Europe and is essentially a pickled wood, for lack of a better process analysis, but it's dehydrated and then chemically treated so that it its lifespan endures a little bit longer. And then we have a fairly rudimentary painted steel pipe post, so a very simple application, but also very practical. So as you can see by the check marks and the Xs, four moved ahead to the the next round. So from this standpoint, we we dug a little deeper and specifically identified products that could be applied to the different applications as it related to wayfinding signage and amenity signage. So we narrowed it down to the peeled log as it exists today. The aluminum with printed wood finish, the fiber cement, we were able to find a manufacturer that preforms it and fabricates it out of Montana, and then painted steel pipe posts. So as you can see, I won't go into all of the the details here, but some of the highlights for the peeled log was that aesthetically, it was the most natural and the most aligned with what the design intent was from the the beginning. Some of the challenges with it are the durability, because it does require that heightened level of maintenance in order to maintain the the look and appearance without the weathering aspect. Another thought or question from the team was around fire resistance. So this was more on the the lesser end of the fire-resistant spectrum. But in terms of replaceability and replicability, this was kind of at the higher end of that. Easier to acquire and achieve the look of this as locally as possible as it's already being completed. The second option was this fiber cement product, as mentioned. This was out of Montana, so the furthest away that one of the products would be coming from or the potential products would be coming from. In this instance, they would actually create a form. It would be poured with cement, it would be detailed and textured on the outside and then painted to suit. In this instance, high durability at the highest end of the durability spectrum, but doesn't necessarily capture some of the cost benefits that we were hoping to see. It is more on on the pricier side of of everything. Then in the middle, we had the aluminum with printed wood finish and the steel options. So the aluminum had, you could still get the the look and the patterning of wood on the exterior. It's lightweight, which helped its case. But in terms of durability, it was kind of slightly less than the steel. And it, yeah, and it it kind of met the measures in terms of of durability comparatively. The steel, so that there's one application of this already existing to date. So this is very straightforward. A single color is applied a little bit further away from the aesthetic quality that was the ideal in the metric. And in terms of price, it was it was much more on the lower end. So with all kind of those highlights that were assessed against the the different parameters that were laid out, each one was ranked, so each of the four options was was ranked either kind of low to high and or if it met kind of a yes/no function depending on whatever the parameter was. So the the five parameters again were achieve similar aesthetic as current peel log specification and meets design intent, demonstrates a high level of durability, can be effectively fabricated to suit site conditions and has structural integrity. The source of the product can be justified. So we were looking at that in the context of as local as possible, so Canada and North America as kind of a broader level, and then cost. And from a cost perspective, so peeled log and the steel pipe were the lowest with the fiber cement and the the aluminum being moderate to high. But then factoring in durability, peeled log being kind of on the lower end of thing, fiber cement and steel being on on the higher end. So that's our analysis to date. I think the question, and Deb, feel free to jump in here, but is how do we want to narrow this down even further to do a a cost estimate on a unit-by-unit basis and thinking about the overall signage program as it rolls out and expands? How we want to move this forward? But yeah, I'll I'll let Deb jump in now. Thanks for your time.
So thank you very much for the presentation, and I'll open it up to the floor for questions, unless Ms. Juke threw up something else. Exactly what I was hoping you'd have. So, counsel, what questions do we have? And counsel, how's?
Yeah, I just have a question in regards to what we currently have. The source of the production. I realize we do have local guests in Edmonton, but one thing that I've heard over the years is it's it's limited in how much we can, you know, it's an ex, it's a specialty type of of product that takes usually, you know, some sort of expert to do it in there in high demand. So is it really that accessible? You know, if we were to continue with the peel log as or as things changed, or is it similar in in its accessibility? I guess I mean, I don't know who I'm at, either Deb or I was looking to the to, sorry, I forgot your name, but.
Lee. Lee, yeah. I can answer that question. I think it definitely does require an expert skillset in terms of getting that that finish quality. But it goes more back to the timing of the order and and that sort of thing to acquire the product. I think from a a cost perspective, we're looking more at just what is the the overall cost to acquire and and produce the finished product? Not necessarily like the intricacies of the timeline and the coordination it might take in order for that to happen.
And counsel, a session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That question regarding cost. The fiber cement, if council wanted to retain the look of of real wood peeled log and get away from the maintenance costs and and deterioration over time. Do we have an idea of what cost is? Like on on the chart, it's low cost for peel log, high cost for fiber cement. But when we compare low to high, is there is there a guideline or an idea about what that comparison looks looks like? Is it three times, five times, 10 times?
Yeah, I can also respond to that. From what we've seen, and it it's difficult without breaking it out even further, but we were able to acquire a cost, a preliminary cost estimate from the manufacturer out of their shop in Montana. It really comes down to to quantities, so economies of scale has a a huge impact here. If you were to kind of have a similar, maybe like mid-to-large size order, so I'm thinking like 30 units, something of that nature. There's a point that, you know, you need to have a a base number of units for it to even make sense to go into the fiber cement option, because there's a a mold that or a form that they need to create and manufacture before they can even construct them. So there's that component, but if you were, if all things being equal, it'd probably be, yeah, like around the five times mark. But I guess like to further that in terms of life cycle, you might also see that five times extension of life cycle or even beyond. We we actually got quite a literal comment in terms of its durability, that it can withstand like cars impacting it, trucks impacting it, bullets, like anything, it's it's very durable in comparison. So, yeah, just to give some broader context.
Yeah, just a follow-up question for clarification, then the fibers, it just makes it permanent. Does it require any ongoing maintenance, like resealing or anything to keep it looking fresh? Or is it permanent forever?
As far as I understand, there it's fully sealed and it's a a solid unit. So, you know, if 20, 25 years down the line, the concrete starts to impact on itself as it continues curing, because it it'll always continue curing, you might start to see some hairline fractures, that type of thing, but that could be dealt with at with like a a sealer or some sort of polymer material. And when I say 25, it's likely more 40 to 50.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions?
So like, what are we looking to do in the next 10, 15 years of this? Looking to take all the wood signs out and replace them, or are we just looking to replace them as they kind of fall apart?
Through the chair. That would ultimately be up to Gallo, but my recommendation is that as these deteriorate and need to be replaced, they're just replaced with another one. And I think that was a big reason that we, that council wanted to look at. A log aesthetic is even when we were transitioning into something, there was still some continuity in what these look.
So we must have some sort of number, what that would be over a period of time?
Of all of our signs and how many we have.
I mean, we definitely replace within a decade.
So we'll we'll thread on through the chair to the rest of committee. We haven't done a, we haven't done a complete assessment of the current status of all the signs to answer that question. That is something that we could eventually do and bring forward along with more detailed cost, such as per unit cost and feasibility in terms of whether or not our own staff could do the replacements, or if you didn't have to contract that out. There are several questions yet to answer. But with four alternatives on the table, I guess thinking was, could we narrow this so that we can then give you greater detail on your work?
So the greater detail that we're looking at over a long, two period of time, 15 or 20, would be how many of these do we need to order in that period of time? And which which type are we going to order?
So through the.
Because how many we order, and the price is dependent on the quantity.
Through the chair and the rest of the council, that's true. And then the other costing that council should probably have in hand before they make a decision is what is the actual maintenance on on each of the alternatives? Because no maintenance, I don't think is a is the thing. Some maintenance fee will occur. And the cost of install, acquisition and install as well.
Are you good, counsel?
Oh, yeah, no, that's what I eventually like to know, is the 15 or 20-year total maintenance and replacement cost, whatever we have to replace. If we're talking 30,000 versus 35,000 versus 40,000 of all these options, or are we talking 40 versus 20 versus 100,000? We know that right now.
Yeah, I firstly, I with with the costing in in consideration, but I'm prepared tonight to to narrow the the focus for myself. I've been, have not been an advocate of the field logs at all. They are very high maintenance, they're hard to get, they deteriorate. And and, you know, we we've just proven with looking around the community, you know, how how deteriorate the cost of maintenance. So I mean, personally, if I'm looking at these four, I'd like to see what the cost of the fiber cement is. I'm not a fan of aluminum, to be honest with you. They kind of looks like a fake wood in somebody's basement. You know, and and I would like to see the steel, because if I'm correct, we already have some steel ones. Is that we've replaced them and they have the steel ones? If I may.
We have one.
We have one?
Yes.
Okay, and how, and just out of curiosity, you know where it is and how long it's been out? The picture is there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's the Hinton Center or not, the the Newark Center.
Okay. And do we know how long it's been out, just to see its durability?
Couldn't say exactly, but it has been years, and I don't believe there's been any maintenance.
I do have one question for, if I may, for the for Lee. The coating on the steel pipes, that's a paint that is that is put on them? And that's a simple for maintenance-wise, if it if it breaks down, we can repaint it ourselves. It doesn't take a specialty to do that?
Yes, exactly. So that's how this one has been implemented. There are other options where you could, you know, resort to powder coating or some other sort of process-based paint or application. But I think that the idea here is that we're keeping it as practical for maintenance purposes as possible. So, yeah, it would it would just be a surface touch-up type of idea.
Thank you. May I ask, Counselor, a follow-up question, please? What is the cost of the maintenance on peel logs? I don't have that information. I honestly, I I can't answer that either, but I don't think you said it was for that. Well, we haven't been doing any of it. Is I don't think we've been doing any of the maintenance, because they deteriorate. And then I haven't seen anything, anybody else maintenance-ing it. So I have not, I mean, I don't know what the cost is, but I do think we're not doing it. And I don't know if it's because of cost or if it's because of expertise or what. So I'd look to administration to answer.
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of committee. I'm I'm speculating a little bit here, because I'm not sure of the history of it, but the Parks Department used to be part of the Infrastructure Services Department, and then it was split out. And I believe at the time, I'm speculating here, but I believe at the time that it was split out. This is one of the items that nobody was going sure who should be doing it, and so it just wasn't done anymore. And my understanding is that we used to have a contractor, the local log home builder, I believe, that would come in and do a number, not all of them, but a number per. And this is just our wayfinding signage, I'll remind everyone, it's also our architectural features on our buildings and some other decorative park amenities, benches, number of things. I don't think we ever did it in-house. I think we've been doing it by with contractor, and it's been dropped off, just been dropped off late somehow. So that's one of the items I could bring back with more information.
Thank you very much. Counselor McGowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just referring to the number three and four options, the aluminum with printed wood finish and also the painted steel post pipe. Both indicate a possibility for essentially a vinyl finish to be utilized to simulate texture. I guess my question is, in regards to ongoing maintenance, is there, because it's vinyl, is there a tendency for that vinyl to get tore and ripped and then have to be replaced as part of the maintenance cycle over time?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we did explore it. The, so the aluminum printed wood finish would be kind of the the main direction of that that product or that material. And yes, it can be like scratched off if it's like in a in a high-impact collision situation. Or if somebody, you know, takes a a blowtorch to it, it can be degraded. So those are definitely considerations that we go into in a little bit more detail and like the overall evaluation up above. But in order to get it repaired and back to working order, it would either need to be, yeah, cut out and a a patch be reapplied, or you would need to kind of re reinstall that entire element. Or you could use a a close color match paint and just paint over the scratch. Depending, it really depends on the severity of the degradation degradation or any damage to it. In terms of the steel pipe, we do have that as an option, but if we're looking at it more as like a simpler kind of option, then we probably wouldn't propose that vinyl finish. We would defer to the aluminum to have that final finish, because it is a lighter weight material to begin with and a stronger application.
Counselor McGowan, good?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'd just like to move the actions. May they reach consensus to further explore both standards, options, peel log and fiber cement with costing and other pertinent feasibility information from administration. If I can speak to it. I think there is some aesthetic value in continuing to move forward with our branded signage of peeled log for all reasons that are indicated in the report. It's traditional to the area and it's supportive of the history of the area. It's aesthetically pleasing. I picked those two options, though, in in over the other two, specifically the steel pipe. I don't think the steel pipe captures the peeled log aesthetic at all. To me, it looks like a steel pipe that's came to ground instead of black. Uh I don't think the steel pipe captures the field log aesthetic at all, to me, it looks like a steel pipe that's painted brown instead of black. Uh and the aluminum one, the aluminum one, it would be okay, maybe if there was a a flat facade with a wood finish and then some overlay over it. But I think for signposting, it's not my preferred option, the fact that it's only uh moderately durable is a concern for me. The the two options of the peel log and the fiber cement log, I think the fiber cement log could be. A viable solution in locations where the signage is potentially more elaborate, heavier, permanent. And the possibly the peel log, peel log could be an option in areas where the signage might be more temporary. I do want to see more options, though, comparing the maintenance costs of the peel log structures, if they're properly maintained on an ongoing basis so that they look. Good constantly, my concern and the concern that I've heard from council in the past with peel logs is they look great when they're new. But after a year or two of weathering, the surfaces, especially the ones that are on the trough are severely weathered, severely exposed. And in the case, and I I realize libraries not signposting. But in the case of the library where there's structural insulation, they actually degrade to the point where they become a safety hazard and they look terrible. So uh that's why I'm supporting those two options moving forward, I'd like to see what the council has to say, thank you.
Thank you, sure, Councilor Taylor.
Uh no, that's okay.
Yeah, um I'm still personally, I'm still skeptical of the peel log, but I I think you're gonna move forward with that. I agree, we need to have what the costing is for um for maintenance and a schedule of maintenance as well. That's you know, how how often we're going to be doing this, because I agree, I mean, when it comes to wood, uh moisture, if they're not sealed properly, they deteriorate quickly, they look bad. Um you know, so I I would definitely have to see that, I have interest to definitely to see the side of the fiber cement, I think for longevity and for um. For durability, it's high on the list, it's just the question of cost uh for me. And uh yeah, so I I'll I at this point, I I would support those two to go look further into it and and hash out those costs more, so thank you.
Councilor Taylor.
I like peel log, um but uh I didn't say this with peel logs, it's kind of a question. Do we not kind of learn with the peel log, is some things to do or not to do based on our experience already that prolong its life? What you do to the base and uncover it, people like that. And that's through your own admission, I'm not sure we follow the traditional leaders, so. If there are, there are opportunities to stay with the peel log and have it last even longer, it's lasting the best, right?
Through the chairman of the council, yeah, I you know, I I wouldn't put all the blame on the peel log as a material, because you know, these things do require. Uh I think a fairly frequent maintenance, so whatever whichever one we decide to go with, there is going to be maintenance requires uh requirements somewhere than others, but. Whatever that is, we need to ensure that we're either putting the manpower or finance up behind ensuring that we have a maintenance schedule, we know what that what that is. And we're going to do it, because we do decide to stick with peel log, you know, I I do it for me, that peel log looks really good, it's, you know, we're a forestry town and it's, you know, uh I think it's something that. You know, we should be proud of, but if we're letting things deteriorate, that's not taking pride in what we do, so we definitely will be moving to uh a maintenance schedule regardless of the. The material that's selected. And uh Madam Chair, I actually have a question just on the fiber cement. And and this will be for the lead. You you mentioned something about the fiber cement that we're reading a little bit, but that it can withstand a car crash. There are breakaway requirements and a lot of most of the signage is located along roads. So is this uh would this comply with breakaway requirements, or do you think that it could pose a hazard for travel? Or would this be better suited for parks and uh and those types of areas?
Thank you for the question, I I would tend to agree with the latter, so in more permanent um locations where maybe it's like a. Uh civic amenities sign where it's kind of stating the name of a building or something like that, um along a roadway, especially um. A roadway where people are traveling at a significant speed, that's uh that's definitely a concern for sure. Um I would be curious, though, like what are the analytics comparatively between the peel log as opposed to that? I I'm assuming the breakaway point is kind of at the base uh where it attaches to the the collar there, but um yeah, just thinking about that more holistically. Does that answer your question?
Through the chair, uh is someone I I, yeah, I I think it's definitely something that we need to look into further. Uh on those requirements, I know even with wood structures, there's certain requirements on on the base and uh. So I I just don't know how that would transfer over into this ever log or fiber cement material, but something, you know, in a further analysis will definitely.
Like what do you want to say, Stephen, to what?
Uh through the chair of all of councils, so uh when we're looking at our roads, uh you you tend to have what's called a clear zone. And none of the sign options that you're looking at would be okay to erect within the clear zone. Uh all these signs need to be outside of that that area, and then you don't have to meet the requirements of having them break away. Inside the clear zone, that's where you must have the signage requirements of breakaway posts and none of these options would meet that, right?
Councilor, are you good to see? Councilor, um Chamber, sorry for the wait.
Um thank you, through the chair. Um I completely agree with everything that Councilor Stachik said. Um I'm a big fan of the pe- peeled logs, I think the signs are are beautiful. I hate to do a big capital project because we drop the ball on maintenance. I know that they can be maintained for, you know, a long period of time, I like that the cost is low and that it's local, and I think if we had a good long term. A good maintenance plan and a good long term kind of lifecycle planning, and then we planned that out with local builders and said, hey, you know, we're gonna need. Ten logs for sign replacements in twenty twenty seven or whatever, we could start to get ahead of the that replacement. I I like the potential of the fiber cement as well. But what worried me in your comment is it almost sounds like if we're gonna go down that road, we'd almost have to do a massive capital project, buy them all at once for that kind of economies of scale, like you said. And then I also worry a little bit about what is this gonna look like in in five years, ten years, is this a long term company? Are we gonna be able to source this again, or are we gonna be back here using logs, because now this amazing company in Montana is out of business, or? I I just, I think we can, it could be a really cool option, but what does that look like? When we go to, so let's say we did everything in one big swoop, um that would probably be the best thing for price per item, it sounds like, but. I don't know, I I just, I worry about that, and and I think that from a a community standpoint. I I I'm kind of a fan of the logs, I just think we have to do a better better job of keeping up with it and. Um I'm not a fan of the aluminum finishes, I've worked with them a bit and found them not to be very durable. They they just, I don't know, I mean, I don't I I don't know exactly these ones, but the ones I've worked with just seem to. Always have some sort of damage point or they don't come in the way you want them, and I think the steel pipe is just kind of cheap and ugly. And I think we can do better if the cost is lower for the logs, I I I'd like to see that, but I don't I don't know if you know more about um if. The cyber or the fiber cement company and their their history, etc., but I would just be worried about trying to get something like this again down the road in ten years, but interested in both of those options.
Hey, thank you, uh Councilor Stausch. Uh Mr. Mayor.
Question for through the chair and the administration. These two plans, peeled log, fiber cement, both beautiful options, beautiful signs, looking through the report, there's lots of different places. And and uses that we're using peel logs right now. I'm curious if we might consider keeping the steel pipe in consideration for areas of town and thinking around trails. Heavily wooded areas, difficult to access, where we might need some wayfinding or just cost effective low maintenance signage that's not out in the open everywhere. Is that something that we need to keep in this, or is moving to fiber cement peel logs at this stage still leaving you that flexibility for our trail system?
Uh through the chairman of the council, I I would say that if we wanted to keep steel piping consideration for any location, I would include that in the analysis. Um and we can certainly provide some additional information on it, because you you know, we're gonna have to look in into all of these and there's a lot of options, I think some were. Better in different locations, I know with administration, we talked about, you know, going to a. What we thought would have been the cheapest option being the painted steel pipe and saying, well, if we wanted to go there, you could do that when you're driving by at a hundred kilometers an hour, you don't really. Can't really tell what the texture is, right, but the ones where you're, you know, interacting with, they're close to, you want that to have that authentic look and feel, so I mean, I think all of them could. You know, would be well suited for certain situations, uh but if council does want us to look at the steel pipe option, uh what for certain locations, uh I I would. I would ask that that be reflected in motion if we consider that.
Well, certainly. Then what are we doing currently for wayfinding sign, paper board block?
Chair, the rest of the committee, the signage standards manual has a standard for that, it's basically a um a rough saw timber post, short. And then we use rough saw timber in other standards as well, for example, the interpretive signage package. Which was a repurposed design and repurposed other family that we never use, and so we, one of the amendments was to add that in as interpretive signage. So you if you consult the, well, the the current signage standards manual online does not show you, but I can show, I can provide a draft that you can see that.
Yeah, I I'm, I know they, I agree with they're not, they're cheap, the steel pipe, but I think uh Mr. Mayor has a valid point. Uh and so is the CEO, I hope he'll read through the hard mouse now, but anyway, uh but I I would like to see the steel pipe also, because maybe there are areas. That we could utilize the steel pipe that isn't necessary to have this elaborate one, so. Um I could look to an amendment, I could look to Councilor Stachik, if he wants to add this to it, but it seems any of that, so I'm.
Councilor Stausch.
I wasn't proposing an amendment, I have a question. So if this is adoptive, just just say, uh council adopts peel log and fiber cement at some point in the future, where does that leave? Administration with other options for signage posting, because if we're looking, the mayor does bring up a really good point, in remote areas where. Where where cost is consideration or the sign is deemed to be temporary. Can we can we use steel still, can we use the rough saw timber is fine too, but I think that's in terms of of economics, that's probably the the. Most economical option, I think fits the fits the aesthetic, fits the criteria, and honestly, in terms of. A natural aesthetic, I think rough saw timber is probably a close second behind peel logs. So where where would that leave administration and their ability to choose an appropriate type of signage that's uh not peel log or fiber cement in applications where it makes sense?
So with the signage standards manual essentially open right now, um ob- obviously, a wholesale redesign would not be desirable, so we want to keep with the aesthetic. But I think it would be interesting, and I hadn't thought of it, to have an alternative material as a secondary post standard, so that in places where it's temporary or if there's um. You know, no real need for peel log as an aesthetic, that we have an alternative to go to, such as being still tight, so is it third option would be an excellent comparative?
Uh so I'd like to propose an amendment to add to that, to this uh direction, the steel pipe. If I can speak to it. I think there's value that we could investigate, you know, for certain areas and it gives administration that opportunity to explore that without, we'd still. Going with the the with timber if necessary, but having that third option for certain areas, I think uh then gives them that clarity to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
But and Councilor Stausch, you were good there? Uh I had you then, um, Councilor Oz, when I thought I cut you off.
Thank you.
So council, anything, any for the discussion on this? And seeing now here now, I'm gonna move to a fraction, and John, do you have that ready?
Sorry, Madam Chair, we have an amendment to first. Take care.
Chair, you still have a question? You still have a clinical question?
Good catch. So council, we do have the amendment before us, and that is to have the steel pipe as a third option. And please hold on. We have um six, four, and one. And I will move on to our maybe in the other direction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No administration has asked to try and limit options, I'm actually gonna put another amendment forward too. There's quite a few things that came forward today that I hadn't considered, if we restrict options to a very narrow view of uh how much that would limit. Administration may be able to use alternatives, so I would like to propose the amendment to include uh rough saw timber as an option as well. If I can speak to that, I think there's applications where rough saw timber would make a lot of sense, like I spoke to a little bit earlier. Locations where it might be a more temporary sign or place that's um where where. The economics of the cost of the sign installation matter, rough saw timber is even cheaper to steal, so. Um I think it makes sense in a lot of places, especially for trail signage, that maybe rough saw timber is the preferred option. I'd like to see some input come back about that too, maybe then maybe have that included in the head of signage standards moving forward. Thank you, sir.
So council, we do have an amendment before us, um Councilor Taylor.
We need that? Like, I mean, when you go walk the trail, you go walk the trails, basic sign of standard, just to avoid the standard being grabbed. Cheaply, it's got a sign on it, on a sign. We're not gonna do it with that, would we change the sign standards, are we?
So through the chair to the rest of the committee, I so I should probably verify, because we don't have the existing signage standards manual here or the updates in draft form. So rough saw timber is the standard in the manual for interpretive signage, and it is also used for trail markers. And uh we just are doing the green square sign and interpretive signage for that project that's funded by GRAM. And you can go down and see, you'll see that it's it's being constructed out of rough saw timber, so that standard is already in the manual. It isn't the standard for these particular signs that we have in front of us today, which are the wayfinding signs and the park name signs, which are currently round, they're round with logs. And so to to swap it out with something else, the hope was that we could keep to a round, brown. And so to, to swap it out with something else, the hope was that we could keep to a round, brown thing or something close enough that it wouldn't affect the aesthetics of the design that we have in front of us. That was the aim, but of course, whatever council wants to look at, and we can come back with pricing on rough saw timber since we have a current source for that. So it's not impossible. Thank you.
Well, Chair, if I may. You know, without having the draft, the signage standards manual before us, I didn't realize that there were different different criteria for signs, different sign types and that different sign types have different posts. That actually changes my opinion. So I would withdraw that. However, knowing that, I don't know that I would have supported the steel option either.
I would like, I'd like to withdraw my amendment.
And do we need a motion to or a vote to withdraw the amendment? So Jen, you got that? So we, counsel, before us, we have a request to withdraw Counselor Stashik's amendment. And the amendment is to include rough saw and timber.
I think it should be coming through.
I have nothing but, I'm not scared. Thank you. And Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Stashik's last point. This is an awkward process to go through a signage menu without, without a manchlor in front of us, but at this point, we're basically asking administration to continue looking at pricing and availability information. I think having that for the aluminum post is is unlikely to cause a burden on administration and their investigations and it may be useful information at the end. So I think from my perspective, we're doing okay there.
Sure. And Counselor House?
Maybe this is premature, but I'm curious. When we get costing, is that also going to include, say, like the library where we, we removed it and replacing it? Or are we specifically just talking about signage? Or what's the administration's plan? Thoughts on that?
So we haven't, so through the chair of the rest of committee, we hadn't anticipated that. But I think that is, that is definitely appears to be the next question. So hopefully we can provide information from which you can extrapolate or we can extrapolate for you some idea of the cost when it comes to preparing, for example, the face of the library, which is missing architectural features. I, I think it wouldn't be difficult to extrapolate that information out and sure it's needed. We have some flag posts, for example, up front of government center here that are missing. We have also log benches that need maintenance and that aren't getting that. So for sure, I think we can bring that forward as well. Who do you call as well?
Good.
So counsel, we do have a motion or a direction before us. Any other discussion on that? And seeing and hearing that Jen, oh my goodness, you're not ready. So our direction is that committee reached consensus to further explore posts of standard options, peeled log, fiber cement and steel pipe. And with costing and other pertinent feasibility information from administration at a future committee meeting, please hold now.
Yeah, my apologies, Madam Chair. I shouldn't have been quicker on the draw.
Okay, so that's Karen. Counselor, any other questions?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I have a question. No, I'm sorry, I have questions. And I should have been quicker on the draw. But to Counselor House's point, what is going to come forward with the structural law information that was included in our report? It wasn't a request to do anything about it. It was simply for the signage. I'm going to let you manage your, if you'll allow that question or not. I know you called it the whole question. So that's up to you.
Okay. So are we looking to synthesize or to? Go ahead, sir.
Not Jerry, yeah, but I, I think the main elements of what our, you know, our investigation or lots of our research or is going to be on this is going to be, you know, what, what is the cost of peel logs? How much does it cost to maintain that log? You know, we, we may have to look at specifics on, you know, utilizing, using the library as an example. That might be a little bit of a special case that we'll have to look into a little bit. Because it's, it's kind of more structural and I, I understand that there used to be more logs there. So we can always look at the specifics, but you know, regardless, all the information that we're going to gather, like maintenance, you know, how, how much does it cost? You know, sourcing and installation, all of those types of things, you know, I think it'll be relevant for all peel logs in the community. We may have to kind of, may have to narrow down specific projects, especially when it's because called structural or they might be subject to building codes like with, like on the library. So you know, we can always look at those specifics when the time comes, but I think the information we're going to have will be applicable to all peel log signs or structures throughout town.
Let's turn, if I could follow up this. So where is that standard? You know, lots of being used as a structural component or decorative component, but isn't specifically the signage. What standard does that fall under?
But it may be applicable to the public building or the national.
If I could follow up more specifically to the town, like is there a town standard that says when log structure or log aesthetic is used on a building? Is that?
Go ahead through the chair. I don't believe we have those facade standards for our, you know, because I think it was just a an individual decision at the time to do it in certain locations like at the library. I S P, I think those are just individual decisions, but I don't believe we have standards on these buildings.
That was the clarification I was looking for with it was included in a standard somewhere or if it's just an architectural decision that came with the building design, which is what it sounds like. Thank you.
Counselor House?
Yeah. If I recall, being on the library board because they aren't structural, they were more aesthetic because that's why we could remove them and didn't have to do anything with them at this point. So I guess, you know, I'm comfortable if we know the cost and we can have that conversation at a later date potentially because I mean, my thought is this is coming back on signage. And then if we see the cost, maybe then that's the time we make a, because I don't want you to do that work and then it comes to something that we don't want to do. I guess that's where I'm at. So either we move a direction today potentially on that to, to bring that into the report or, you know, we, we, we investigate that with under your date against administration.
Finally, address that. I think I envisioned the information coming back. Something like, here's what, here's what a post cost of this length, this dimension in this material, that material and that material. Here's the maintenance schedule on this material, that material and that material in, out in the weather. And then lastly, here's a particular sign example, for example, in the happy, the happy quarter. We could take that particular sign, that's ready, it's had three posts in it to, to purchase a replacement for that, given this material, that material, that material. This is what it's going to cost you today. And, and this is an installation feasibility. So can we do it in-house? We have a higher contract. I think that information, and that's what I meant by extrapolate out, you could take that per post costing, for example, and look at what the library had. They located this material, that material, that. So fixing that's going to cost, you know, X, Y, Z. That's what we're thinking. But actually getting a, a price on it, fixing that is a different step. So counsel, is there any other discussion you'd like to have on the Thomas Hidden timing for number? Nothing. So we're going to move on to our next report. And Lee, I'd like to thank you very much for being part of this.
Thank you so much for, for inviting me to speak and for all the great conversation.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
So counsel, we're going to move on to park bylaw number 1184 stakeholder engagement results. And we'll find that on page three in your agenda. And we're turning on the user.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I will turn the paper.
Thank you, it's great to meet the chair of the rest of committee. And so this matter before you is returning the stakeholder engagement results from, as directed by council after first reading of the draft park bylaw 1184 on January 16th. So the administration, actually the community services department ensured that each of the stakeholder groups or many of them anyway, were receiving a copy of the bylaw, copy of report cover that went to council and asked for their information and their input on it. Got a moderate amount at least, I could say. The results have been tabulated and are attached to your report. And just to go through sort of what was determined from it. So I won't look through all the different statements. I think you can read that and it's fairly consistent across the board. Many didn't have any concerns, but maybe did have concerns. And so for example, we gave it to the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee, Mary Island Park Society, the mountain bike park operators, less young than trails society. So it appears from the feedback that unlike other jurisdictions, Hintonites expect and enjoy nighttime aspects of the, to enjoy the nighttime aspects of the outdoors such as engaging in nighttime walks or bike riding, sky watching is a big one and wildlife viewing, which at the Beaver Boardwalk is highly occurring at night. So it's kind of interesting. So the regulation and then we also did a little research to look at what the closure hours would be in the different parts of the year, given the one hour after sunset to one hour before sunrise. And it looks like in some parts of the year, parks would actually close at about five thirty in the evening. So it looks like the impacts are quite significant on legitimate park users who will lose the freedom to predict in the activities that I've just listed, especially in winter when sunset is so early. But as well, the, one of the fears that I heard as well is that, is that residents that are near parkland may expect enforcement action when they see a headlamp or somebody walking or a vehicle parked nearby of just a legitimate problem free user. So the impacts of the bylaw appear to be quite significant and they reduce the service level of parks. Unfortunately, which is certainly not the intention of the law. You've got to avoid that. Administration has been discussing the options and has looked at the nuisance, again, looked at the nuisance bylaw, which is a bylaw that is focused on behaviors rather than access control. So we're looking at maybe ways to amend that bylaw in, in such that the eviction option is there for enforcement personnel, which isn't there now, and some description of behaviors that are not acceptable on the townlands. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have to do with this file. Thank you very much. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I agree with those comments. I think having a curfew and a worse challenge with all anyone else. That we have users that want to use it to concentrate on the behaviors that are causing problems to do something with that. The thing that I see that might be difficult is, yeah, you can, you can give somebody a ticket. But maybe a lot of these people didn't take them to, they didn't pay the money to pay for it anyways. It's the actually getting off the land at that particular time. It's like the same. So bylaws, you're going to say, no, you can't be federal right now. That's what we're really looking for here. I sense. So can we do that with a nuisance bylaw? There's, if we work with the nuisance bylaw and have a problem behavior, we do that. So I sense that's what we need to.
Through the chair to all of you, that is exactly what we would be looking at, counsel, is managing the behaviors, the undesirable behaviors. And there are provisions, other provisions that the Mounties or bylaw could use the trespass act to different, different mechanisms that make use to just move people along so that the undesirable activities are not occurring.
The penny trespass act is going to be used to get somebody off the land immediately?
It can be. Oh, yes. It, it, and also the, well, if they're like set up camp, it can be used. So just activities like, you know, if there's justification. There is mechanisms in place that the Nazis could just move that behavior along or they charge.
If we change the bylaw.
If we change the bylaw, yeah.
So we can do that. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Your turn, sir. Uh, CEO?
Just one element, just a fail ball, chief of the board draw, what you're saying, but the one, the big thing or the part of the rationale for coming forward with these options from the R C P and they, they didn't necessarily want to use those those other mechanisms. Because if you've gone through, you know, trespassing, you know, it's a it's a much bigger process than just simply having a bylaw that just enables you to move somebody. It's it's usually an easier process. It's, you know, I, I think there was lots of situations where suspected illicit activity and people who were parked and idling for hours at a time. You know, certain situation where the, the police didn't necessarily want to go that far and then they just wanted people to keep the peace, so to speak. So that would be a reason for the R C P coming forward with this recommendation is just to give them another tool to assist them in what it came to specifically parks.
Sure. So counsel, we do have three options that administration has given us. And Counselor House?
Yeah. I'm going to move the option one, which is the committee reaching consensus to explore options to amend the nuisance bylaw 1101 to address problems on townlands and refer that to a committee meeting, if I can quickly speak to it. I think this is the best of the options. I think it was going to get a little bit difficult with, with the different seasons and, and having the curfew and it, it's you know, it, it may stop or may not stop, but it, it just, people would be breaking the news for the bylaw that can be with nighttime activities that we do all the time. So I think this is the best option. I think also too, by the sounds of it, it gives two elements of, of enforcement in our community, bylaw and the, the R C P where before the R C P could go down the trespassing route, took a lot more work, but our bylaw officers can't do that. So this way we've got now two elements as well assisting that. So I think that's the best option and just iron out the details of what behaviors we're seeing so that we can cover all that in the bylaw that's, you know, to have that conversation or see what administration expects. So, thank you.
So Counselor Stashik.
Madam Chair, yeah, I support the motion on the table. I think an amendment to a bylaw that governs people's behavior rather than the time they're at specific locations is probably a better way to manage the issues that we're seeing here. I did have a question for administration though. With this potentially moving forward, what happens to the amendments to bylaw?
What is there?
Through the chair of council. We have a few options and the solicit input committee on how we want to handle this, but if we, you know, if we are of the mind that we no longer want to pursue
Of the mind that we no longer want to pursue the proposed parks by law. Really, we could just do nothing after two years that lapses for that would, you know, carry as an act of motion to two years and then the legislation. That's the sunset clause of the legislation, or we bring it back and we clean it up to motion. And.
Okay, counsel, we do have a direction before us. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And seeing and hearing no one. The direction is that committee reach a consensus to explore options to amend the nuisance bylaw number one, one, zero, one. To address problems on town lands and refer the matter to a future committee meeting. Counselor, please hold now. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor, is there any other discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Through the chair to administration. If I recall correctly with the original. Parks by law, some of the issues that may or may not have been looking to address was some of the. The late night sports noise in some of our more urban parks. Given all of the feedback that we've gotten from the park stakeholders, especially the Beaver Boardwalk, that makes a ton of sense. There's no basketballs, hockey pucks or. Anything like that going on at midnight. Do we have any, any plans to look at more specific closures of our urban parks?
Through the chair, I can say just want to please build on it. But through the nuisance bylaw, you can address those issues by noise. So they could be there, but if. You know, they're in a park and it's creating a nuisance to the surrounding community, you can deal with it that way. So, you know, if you have. Kids playing basketball in a, in a location with, or say playing pickleball in a location that's very adjacent to neighboring houses and. The noises and nuisance, we can go in, we can give that, that, that particular bylaw. Not to say that they couldn't be there, but. The, we could deal with the, again, deal with the behavior, the nuisance aspect.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Uh, to build on, CEO is telling me the nuisance bylaw currently, the noise section really addresses construction noise and. Activities such as morning at early morning hours. But this is a great opportunity for bringing up a bylaw to tweak it a little bit. We could address and. Add in some of that sports noise that appears in some of the. Or nicely in parks. Yes, nicely is not great with it, but like urban parks, yes. So we could, we could address those noise issues as we tweak the bylaw.
Pause.
So, and. And maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but. We have had some people concerned about noise, but during normal, regular hours. What stops them from calling in a nuisance at seven P M. It's laid out. They're using it for the intended purposes. So I guess my concern is, is it? Is it weaponizing some that may not like it near them without having a time on it? You know, so that's where I'm at is you're, you're opening it up potentially. You know, kids playing street hockey in front of my house or on the street and the noise is bothering me and I can call them the nuisance by law. You know, and then it brings out you and then, I mean, it makes sense. So I guess I, I, I'm, I'm of the same mind with Mayor Nissen is that. Is that, is, should it be a separate thing or can that be included in the nuisance by law?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, through the chairman of council, those particular, the particulars can be dealt with through the bylaw. They wouldn't say that anytime you are. You know, typically in nuisance bylaws, you, you set the time that it would apply similar to construction noise. This symbol. Typically, you know, if it's a noise by law related to construction, you actually set hours where, you know, these hours are appropriate. These types of noise similar to, you know, say pick a ball or basketball or anything else, but you know, this is the time where noise should be expected. These are the times that there's an expectation that. People are home, you know, this would constitute nuisance. So you can be very specific in what. You believe would constitute a nuisance in, in the bylaw. I think that would be the intent for us to bring back and. Address those specific situations that that would arise, but not, not open it up. So at any time there's noise or any of. Any nuisance, because there's, there is a reasonable. You know, acceptance that parks are going to be very loud. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Marjorie Chief, did you want to add? So you're good. So counsel, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to our next part. And that would be five point two, hidden attraction and retention committee. Yes, sir.
Might as well do that, sure. Is there a preference on bringing the parks by law back? I think from administrative standpoint, just cleaning it up, we can bring it forward just for. To get it off the books. Outside this report, but we could just let sleeping dogs lie. Inspire, but is there any preference on how we handle these things?
Would you need a motion on that?
I don't know if we need a specific motion, but e- even if there's, you know, how we handle these things now and in the future.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Uh, if I may, at this stage, it sounds to me like if we leave it on the books until we see the proposed changes to nuisance by law, we can come back and adjust the parks. If we're not satisfied with the solution of the nuisance by law, if we're to close it up right away, we'd have to start from scratch again. So. My preference would be to leave it for now until we see those changes.
I'm seeing a lot of nods. So you're good with that?
Definitely, thanks.
Uh, we're moving on to five point two, into the traction and retention committee appointment. And that is on page twenty-one. And I'll turn that over to administration.
You chair members of council, so. I am Miss David Campbell for creating this, this report and doing a lot of the, the legwork on getting this up and running, but we. To bring you back, we have included. Five thousand dollars in funding for this committee along with two thousand dollars for income. We are recommending that council, well, that committee refer this to council, but ultimately we appoint. Two members of council to sit on this board. The, the terms of reference and the actual structure of this board have not been created, but. Uh, we are bringing it forward early because we think that we should be involved in the creation of those terms of reference, just so we can. Make sure that our say is. Just early on in the process to make sure that we're, we're comfortable with it. You know, our proposal at this point in time is to. Appoint two counselors to the group, but ultimately through, through the work of those. Those counselors, the amount of. Seats will be determined through that terms of reference. So that, that could change, but we're just, we're looking at. Appointing two members at this point in time. We. We have been in discussion with the. Hidden Healthcare Foundation, they've agreed to create some other subcommittee to bring in our path and work alongside our path for. The creation of this committee. So that is scheduled, I think. That is scheduled for March nineteenth, so we are looking to appoint two members by next council to ensure that we can. Uh, we have spoken with Mayor Nissen on recommendations, he's provided with. Counselor Joanne Race and Mayor Nissen to sit on it.
Thank you, sir. So counsel, what questions do we have for admin? Then Counselor Taylor.
I'd like to go with recommended action. That committee refer the matter of the council appointment to the. In the fraction of attention maybe. To a future meeting of council. That go further.
So counsel, we do have a direction on the floor, any discussion? What is the question for administration? When it says to a future meeting of council, it's not, not even as regular?
That will be next. That will be answered.
So counsel, any discussion, any debate? And I'm seeing and hearing none, so. The direction is that committee refer the matter of council appointment to the, to the hidden attraction and retention committee. H A R C in future meeting of council. Counselor, please hold now. And that is carried. So before we move on, counsel, is there any other expansion questions on this report? And seeing and hearing nothing. Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor.
Prior to this, this isn't reflective in the amount of time that it took for it to come from the motion that you have said at the time right now. You explain why it took so long for it to come.
Through the chair to. Through the chair of council. So most of it had to do with working with the foundation, having that established through the foundation, getting their agreement, getting the. Those set up. So primarily that was the, the reason. So, you know, we're. Did not come quickly, but we wanted to make sure that we had other partners at the table as well. This was a little bit larger than just. Running forward with terms of reference for our internal council committee, you know, this was a, there was a large key aspect, so it just took some time to work with those folks. It just says their wholehearted support. Through the chair, I'm looking at Jen and she's nodding. So, you know, I, I haven't ended, but I know Jen has, uh. Wearing dual hats on both the foundation and the town. It is supportive. I believe they will have a representative there to work with this group and guide them through. Developing a terms of reference.
Oh, counsel, anything else on this? Nothing. We're going to move on to report. Five point three, the water main rehabilitation project, and that starts on page twenty-four of your agenda. And I'll turn this over to administration.
Thank you, Chair. That will be Mr. Bloor. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present this report. So, and so we have talked to you a few times about our water line on Switzer Drive. We did a expensive repair there last year. It brought down the water volume in the town quite considerably, which only lasted a couple of months. After which time the water volumes went back up. We. Had help coming out to locate where, where those leaks were and there, and the leaks are in a number of locations. Uh, we decided not to go forward with a repair at that time because. Uh, we felt that we would just be chasing from one spot to another and that the right thing to do is look at this particular line. And get some serious rehabilitation done to it. Um, we have asked our. Consultant who has his standing offers with the, the town for a proposal to engineer a design fix for this solution and I included that as an attachment. So we're asking council to consider this ahead of the. Budget adjustments, just so that we can get design going and have the ability to complete the repairs this year. Financials that we're looking for, I mean, are a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the engineering fees to. Design and supervise through, through the entire, all, all portions of the project. Breakdowns of those, those fees have been provided. And then we're estimating the construction fees at this stage to be one point seven, seven million dollars. And that's a very high level estimate. And at this point, as we go through design, we will have better estimates. That, I think I can take any questions.
Thank you, sir. So counsel, what questions do we have? Public men, um, Counselor, pause.
Yeah, I just have one question. There was a statement in there or assumptions, water may be shut down for up to five weeks. Saw that, but I, I, can you elaborate on? Because what impact was that?
Uh, thank you for the question and through the chair of all of the committee, we will not shut down the water to the R C M P and the. Uh, and the government service building for five weeks. We will install temporary water or work with a contractor to minimize. You, you might have some. Small outages that we might have to limit to weekends or that kind of thing, but. Uh, basically what that meant to say was those are the only two connections to this line that we have to deal with. You know, some lines through a residential area would have many, many connections. This one only has two. So. The line itself will be shut down for approximately five weeks. There's another route that the water takes to get up to the rest, the rest of town. So, so long as nothing goes wrong with the other water line while we're doing the project, we don't anticipate many of the water out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Taylor.
Your, 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 a hundred percent of your leak detection, detection efforts, whatever those are, have found the multiple locations. Like this is, this is actually a pipe that needs to be fixed. Your leak detection efforts are a hundred percent a lot.
Well, they, they, they certainly don't pinpoint it, but they show you that there is a leak. Uh, the device uses sound to listen for leaks and they heard leaking water coming from this pipe. In three locations when they came up to investigate it. Yes, you're not confident exactly where the leak is. You're confident that the leak isn't, leaks are in this section, but. Yes, and, and also having done the, having done the repairs. Last year, and you can even see it in the video, or it's not a video, in the, in the picture, is that the type of leak was basically a rust hole making its way through the pipe that. It, it's more than likely that these are going to be occurring in many locations along the pipe just because of the cause. It's not. It's not because someone hit the pipe or something happened or put it together poorly. This is something that the, the corrosion is deteriorating.
So counsel, any more questions to move in on this topic? And I'm not hearing any. Is anyone prepared to make a direction? And, uh, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to take the recommended action that committee reached consensus to bring this request to the next regular council meeting. For consideration of a twenty twenty-four capital budget amendment consisting of a hundred and forty thousand dollar design fees. And one point seven million dollar construction. Fees for the Switzer Drive Water Main Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you, sir. So counsel, we do have a direction on the floor and discussion, questions? Hearing and seeing none, so I will call this. Call this. The committee reached consensus to bring this request to the next regular council meeting for consideration of a twenty twenty-four capital budget amendment consisting of. A hundred and forty thousand dollar design fees and one point seven million. Construction fees for the Switzer Drive Water Main Rehabilitation Project. And that would be the Switzer Booster Station to Broad Mountain Interception. And counsel, please hold now. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor Taylor.
I think I'm going to have to explain this once. I think I'm gonna have to explain this one to the public in the future, this amount of money. So help me with the five hundred cubic meter uh per day number, uh with that in practical terms, that's maybe kind of savings of waters. Yep. Miss type of repair, that number doesn't uh doesn't, I can't put my mind around that number. But in terms of uh waters, it's safe.
So uh to the chair, the hall of council, so that uh five that five hundred cubes, uh you could use in the estimate that uh a house, a typical house would probably be between fifteen and twenty cubes. So if you use the the higher number there, uh you know, that that would be equivalent of twenty five houses worth of water uh that that is leaking. I did.
Good, okay, thanks.
Yes, sir, can I ask you clarify my question?
Yes.
If the house uses fifteen, twenty cubic meters in
A month.
Yeah, a month. Yeah, so it's twenty five house usages in a month is being lost of data.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
For four hundred and fifty uh houses per day usage. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a large volume of water. No more question.
So council, anything before we move on? Are we all done with this? So we're gonna move on to recording, and I'm gonna start with uh Councilor Taylor. For council to do on, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Um Councilor Chambers.
Nothing to report for myself either.
You two get better.
That's the plan.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um I just wanna um say council went through a an exercise of strategic planning this weekend uh with administration and senior leadership. Uh you know, I I think of all the years that I've done those, that was a very productive couple of days. Uh we got to do a lot of things and a lot of great discussion. I also appreciated um the uh tour of the uh current renovations occurring at the uh Jasper Rec Center. It sure put things into perspective financially, uh you know, so uh yeah, that was a a good part of it. Um also wanted to mention um well, I know it's not a council business, but the community really came out to uh Ash at the George Canyon Concert, um and it was very well attended, a packed house and a very good show. Um and apparently uh George Canyon has some connection to Hinton because he was here this past summer at wedding. Uh one of his relatives uh married a Hinton girl, uh don't know who it was, he didn't say, but he is not his first time in Hinton, so that's why he wanted to come back and uh and perform for us, but he did an excellent job. Um unfortunately, I wasn't able to get to the walk, uh but it was really well attended, I'm sure. Uh maybe some uh counseling will speak to that. Um also, a library board meeting last night. Um so uh I want to uh throw out there that on March twenty third, um we are having the fortieth uh birthday party anniversary for the library. Uh so we've got a lot of events happening, a lot of great uh you know, community involvement. Um C B C is going to be on site, uh and they are going to be uh featuring our library and will be there, and they're also uh funding a lot of what's happening that day as well. Uh they've got an initiative, they want to reach out to the rural community to more get it more uh connected to the rural center. So uh so we've got some musicians that are gonna be are setting up uh and it's gonna be from twelve to four, I believe, uh on March twenty third, so uh yeah, if you can mark that in the calendars, it is the beginning of spring break, but hopefully some people. Um we also discussed last night and passed a uh a new uh reserve policy uh for the library, so that was completed last night, and um I believe that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, sorry, no, Madam Chair, I also should mention, uh I attended the Growing North um conference last week in Grandbury. Uh I gotta say, of all the conferences I've gone to, it was it the best. Um I think one of the reasons I liked it so much is because it was a little bit smaller. They had uh uh potential representatives, ministers there, and were able to actually talk to them. Uh you know, because usually there's so many people there, it's really hard to, so there was an actual conversation, so I passed some information along. Uh also, the breakout sessions were extremely informative, uh learned a lot about uh um we can only attend certain ones, but uh uh one of them was the uh that I attended was in regards to pipelines, C N Rail and um and the uh oh Prince Rupert uh export uh the the port. And so uh there was a lot of discussions, C N is going through a lot of changes right now because the federal government made changes to hours to that they can work. So they are expanding their workforce because it would slow down their rail lines. Um also learned that uh uh pipelines are extremely difficult in Canada to get uh set up, four months to build, four years to get the get the approval to do them from the federal government. So they are uh extremely slowed down and splitting Canada a very difficult position worldwide because of that. Um and then uh Prince Rupert also mentioned uh and they will be advocating for the amendments that is coming forward in regards to coal and the export exporting of that, uh because that's gonna also affect their their ports as well. So uh had some great conversations there, met a lot of great people, um so very worthwhile uh conference, so thank you, thank you.
Do you have a question for Councilor Ross?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Um with respect to the library conserve policy?
Yes.
Now, I know technically they don't have to uh come to uh ask us about the reserve policy, but did they uh did we kind of ask to look at it, or did they see that as necessary? To my sense is that uh um if we learned something that if we learned, if any of us learned anything in six months, it was that uh we are kind of getting a few settle reserve policy, it says you want reserves like this. In a budget time, we say that we can't afford that, which is part of reasonable reserves. That's some feedback from council with the uh least uh part of process, do better.
So I mean, the reserve policy doesn't have any of that. Uh the reserve policy is more for our board to manage our reserve funds so that we don't get into the position that we had it before. So it didn't, we had Ms. Juca was part of the conversation and everything. Um I believe we'll probably share that after uh with council, I believe, but uh it really is just so we govern our reserves, whatever whatever council decides, but we have a a document that we as a board are adhering to that we never had before. So that's the intent of the reserve policy. Um uh I don't believe and I don't think the last one we shared with council either. So it's just specifically internally to our because it has no
Doesn't have all limits.
Doesn't have limits, doesn't have nothing, it's just saying where we want to put our reserves in and and having a strategic plan over the next five years and how we we manage that. So that's what the reserve policy is for our for the library. Because we never had a document like that before.
All right.
Yeah, and so that's the intent of it.
Moving on to Mr. Mayor.
Chair. So CEO and I made it to the Coldest Night of the Year Walk, and the town team did a fantastic job uh fundraising. It was a well-turned-out event. Uh I understand there was a fire smart and uh preparedness uh event at the fire hall on Saturday, and from what I hear, it was very well attended, so thank you, Chief, for making sure that that happens. Uh and that is all I have to report at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Taylor.
Well, nothing to report.
Nothing to report. And Councilor Sasha.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have just a few things to report. I did have a historical uh meeting, and I found out that they are leasing out a portion of the round park. They also had a very successful event with their murder mystery night, and the night was so successful, we're gonna be hopefully doing that next year also. They uh they're looking to build partnerships locally throughout the town. Uh also hoping to promote rental space to generate funds and to increase um the museum audience. So if you know anybody who needs to book a room or a train, they're certainly uh they'd like to be approached. Uh another thing I have to say, I really love the museums, they're just always out and about looking for other ways to generate money. They're in the schools, they're in high values, so good job to them. Uh another thing I want to mention is I I do have to say the weekend, that abstract line was probably not the one I was having. It the tone was so good, um just what we learned. Yeah, I really, really appreciated everything that has been brought to the table. And one more thing before I close, I just finished my um elected official rules and responsibility, which is a one-month course, and I attended two hours every week. Excellent, excellent, and I found it was very, very pertinent to what I do as a councillor. I did do it in my first term, and it's nice to do it a second time and realize you helped me. So I'll finish. And that's it. CEO, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Uh I I did attend the Coldest Night of the Year Walk, and the one thing that Mary did forgot to mention is uh I would like to brag that the town Hinton team was uh the winning team, and we raised the most amount of money, so at twenty five hundred dollars through staff and councils. Wanted to make sure that uh, you know, I I put that out there. Uh and other than that, you know, we, you know, a tremendous amount of work does go into those workshops, uh both before and now after. So, you know, staff and uh senior administration will be focused on uh following up on all of the all of these items and making sure that over the next uh, you know, over the next period of time, we'll facilitate good discussions for council to have these, and probably inform and decide on which direction we'll want to go on some of the big important items of the community. Um other than that, I don't have anything.
Well, um do you, is there gonna be any discussion on the action pedagogy?
Uh to the chair, uh I was not intending on going through it, but I am hoping uh either be or a member of staff, if there are any questions on any particular, I know I'd be happy to uh to update or to provide a context.
All right, so council, do you have any questions on the action pedagogy for event? And nothing, so we're done with this, we're gonna move into our closed session right now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I would need a motion to remove it.
Sure, I had a question.
Oh, you did, okay, well, sir.
Well, I'm just wondering about this uh future meeting of options for extreme weather sheltering homeless people for the rest of two thousand four. We're gonna be set with that, we actually need it for some parental spell they have to post it. Yeah, about the report, so that does not mean that everything is done, but we'll be taking care of it.
So, Chair, to the rest of the committee, um I've invited, I've staged it for the health organization to come back to us with or to meet with administration and develop a report for council. They don't need to do that at present because they have found uh solutions for the coming for the at least this uh insurance year, with the insurance and a partner. Uh they have handled this particular call, so they planned to head for it and they had a solution in place. So I leave the balls in their court, I would say, and then we're just waiting to see if they want to come back to to um the town for support or partnering or any kind of liaison with the with the question of emergency sheltering. People.
So that might be some for next.
Certainly would like to ensure that we have time to make a uh some planning and pair some options and 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 give council time to make decisions on matters. So if it's a matter of bringing a report back to say a solution's been found and we can tie that one off, we can certainly do that. At this time, I've just left the invitation open to develop that report for town consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, you have made a motion going to applause?
Yes, sir.
And um we have a direction, the committee moved into closed session at five, cramming H P S, since we're now. And that's carried.